Thank you. Can you hear me okay? Our Zoom members, can you hear me okay? Excellent. All right, well, thank you very much for your time, your attention this evening. I am back to move us through the next phase of the Financial Sustainability Strategy Development process for the Park and Recreation Department of the City of Forest Grove. So appreciate your time tonight. This is going to be a bit of a different type of work session in that I'm gonna do a bit of a review for all of you, and the majority of our time together this evening is going to be by way of activity. So hopefully you will enjoy. Yeah, eat up now while you can. I'm having a little issue with my remote here. Can we? I've got an issue with my remote. Thank you. So, real quickly, this is gonna be our agenda for the next hour or so together. I'm gonna be doing a bit of a review of the Strategy Development Process. Basically, some of the same information I shared with you last time I was here in front of you. And then we're gonna spend most of our time tonight on what we refer to as a beneficiary of service exercise, and I'll give you some context, some instruction and direction relative to how that works and what it's going to look like and feel like for all of you. And then I'll open the floor for any final thoughts, questions, comments that you have, and share with you what next steps in the process are like. We are gonna be very careful of time because, once I'm finished here, I am going over to the school district, and we're going to be doing a community work session similar to what you're going through tonight. So with that, again, I'm gonna start with a review of the process. You may recall, if you were here with me last, that this entire process is rooted in how we best use our finite resources. I will tell you, back in the 80s, late 80s, when I got in the field, we talked a lot about limited resources. And today, in the public sector, particularly in the world of public parks and recreation, we speak about finite resources. There's only so much staff time, there's only so much space, and there's only so much money. And the question for all of us is, how do we essentially best invest it? How do we spend it in such a way to have the greatest impact on our community as a whole? It's really a charge for us. It's a pretty heavy responsibility. And it's also a reminder that we are the stewards of taxpayer resources, and every day we spend and invest other people's money. And it's quite the privilege, and again, quite the responsibility. And another bit of a reminder, if you will, I'm not gonna go through all of the data that I went through with you last time, but we are in the final stages of the cost of service analysis. This is a big part of this process, and it essentially allows us an opportunity to work alongside Anne and her team, collecting revenues and expenditures, and determining what the cost of park and recreation service provision is to the community. You can see up here, real quickly, what the total revenues are, or have been, over this five-year, or six-year window, rather, and then what the total expenditures were. And the cost recovery for park and recreation services is 36%. We're anticipating, when we do the reveal of the final data, that we're gonna be in that 35%, 30%, 36% category. So essentially, if you think about it in these terms, it really clarifies it, and that is, for every dollar you expend, you're collecting 36 cents in revenues by way of fees and charges and alternative revenue streams, and you're using 64 cents in taxpayer subsidy to support the park and recreation system. This is about the sustainability of the organization, right? It's real easy to think about the immediate and the short term. What we're really trying to do is help the City of Forest Grove Park and Recreation Department live a long, healthy life, a long, fiscally well-life. So, that said, you may recall this as well. I asked all of you, I asked the staff this, you know, are we smart about managing money? And clearly, we're talking about other people's resources, right? Taxpayer investments. And it becomes a foundational question. It's rhetorical, but a foundation question, I think, for all of us in the public sector. You know, are we really intelligent, thoughtful, and, I think, responsible in terms of how we spend these dollars that we've been privileged to be the stewards of? I'd like to spend just a few minutes revisiting the process, so it's back top of mind and front and center in terms of what we've been doing, how we do it, and the methodology that is being used to create this strategy. We use this thing called the three-legged stool. The intention is, by way of building these three legs, we're gonna help organizations determine what their tax use and revenue enhancement philosophy is, AKA, a financial sustainability strategy. So by creating service categories, by going through a beneficiary of service exercise, and by looking at cost of doing business, we're able to intelligently and thoughtfully create a strategy that makes sense for our organization. I'm gonna go through each of these legs, again, one at a time. Hopefully, this is just a bit of a refresh, although I'm sure you've been thinking about nothing else since I was here last, in this particular strategy, so many of you could probably walk everyone else through this. I'm trying to be fun, given it's 5:30 at night and you're all eating, so. All right, so, real quickly, the delineation between a park and recreation service, a service area, and what I'm referring to as service categories, I think, is best explained by way of these three slides. A service, a park and recreation service, is essentially a leisure experience provided by this organization, by Forest Grove Parks and Recreation. So think about the different activities, and courses, and classes, and events, and rentals. Any experience that's designed and delivered by this organization would qualify as a service, okay? If we look at service areas, it's a little bit different in that service areas are how we typically, in parks and recreation, structure our organizations. And we do that by likeness of service. On the right, you see three different services, if you will, provided by an organization, and these are all aquatic services. In the top right, that's an Intro to Aquaside class. In the middle is a Learn to Swim program, and on the bottom right is an aquatic facility. These are all part of an aquatic service area. You have a very robust aquatic system here as part of your department. So likeness of service becomes the qualifier, if you will, in terms of how we bucket. Finally, categories, which is a really important part of designing a philosophy, a sustainability strategy, is where we now bucket services based upon likeness of purpose. And so on the right, you see three different types of services for three different types of populations and interests, and they're all in different service areas, right? In the top right, we have that Intro to Aquaside program. Let's say that's for older adults, and it's in our aquatic service area. In the middle, let's say that's an atom-level flag football program for youngsters. That would be in sports, the service is flag football, but the service category itself is a little bit different. And on the bottom right, we have an Intro to Pottery class. The similarities, the purpose of all three of those services, while they serve a different interest area, is all introductory, right? It's helping people learn a new skill, be introduced to a new activity. So like purpose would be beginner-level activity, regardless of if it's pottery, it's sports, or it's aquatics. So, I think the thing that's important for all of you to, I think, recognize and embrace is there's some incredibly strong value associated in utility, associated with service categorization. Number one, it really helps us, when we get into the throes and the detail of creating a strategy, it helps us eliminate arbitrary decision-making, and I'll clarify that here in a moment. Alternatively, it discourages attempts to make decisions based upon social values, interests, or special interests. So, I'm a softball player, I love softball, and I love baseball, but if I bring that to the table relative to cost recovery, it can sometimes get in the way. And finally, aligning interests with equity-based decision-making is really important. We are an equity-based profession. One of our pillars is social equity. And by thinking about our categorization and our bundling of services based on purpose, it really helps us diminish decision-making around, you know, age, or interest area, whatever it might be. It all becomes about purpose. So, to do a quick refresh of the example I shared with you last time, you look on the screen, you see three different kinds of services, albeit these are all recreation-based, this is still a park and recreation activity. But just to give you an idea of how this works and why categories are important, in the bottom left, we see a service, being Intro to Fitness, in the service area Aquatics. In the middle, we see a T-ball program, represented by the service area of U-Sports, and in the bottom right, we see a youngster in our Learn to Swim program, being the service in the service area of Aquatics. Historically, traditionally, for the last three decades in our field, we have made somewhat arbitrary decisions around what we think cost recovery should be by way of the population served or the special interest. And it's become a bit problematic for us across the United States. And so we see that we would make some decisions in this hypothetical based upon, again, our assumptions around what these cost recovery goals should be based upon these services and these service areas. The alternative approach is that we start to see these services differently. And while one serves older adults, and one serves sports, and one serves aquatics, the reality is, they all exist because we're trying to introduce people to a new skill, regardless of age, regardless of interest area. So in this hypothetical, we would see this as a beginner-level activity category, and we would see all different kinds of services from different service areas being represented. Ultimately, what we will find is, every category and all these kinds of services that are in these different categories based on purpose will have the same goal. As we move through this exercise, or this understanding of categories, I also shared with you an alternative example around rentals. And so on the left, we could assume, in this hypothetical, we have a birthday party rental in a shelter. On the right, we have a rental of a sports field. We have, again, historically, traditionally, thought about these differently. If we think about them in terms of purpose, their access, if you will, use of a public space, and when it's used by a particular group or individual, the public does not have access to these facilities. So rentals become individual or group use, exclusive use of a public space, inhibiting others from using that particular field, that particular park, that particular amenity. So these are two high-level examples of what categories are and how they work. You have two handouts in front of you this evening. One is a list of the categories that have been created by the department. Like any good teacher, I'm gonna say, okay, this is your resource, but please do not read that yet. Please pay attention to the presentation. I'm gonna bring you back to center in a few minutes, and we're gonna walk through that together. We'll make sure that we all have a common and clear understanding of the categories before we actually do the exercise. What is important to note is, these categories were created by your professional staff members. They're the content matter experts, boots-on-the-ground, these are the folks that deliver the services every day. They created these categories to represent the service menu of Forest Grove Parks and Recreation. You'll see categories along with definitions and examples, okay? And again, we'll go through these together here in a few minutes. Next, we have the beneficiary of service leg, and that is principally why we're gathered here this evening. I'm gonna be asking you to go through an exercise and an activity we refer to very simply as beneficiary of service. Allow me to give a little bit more context around this. In our kind of hypothetical, traditional, conventional approach, we would, again, set goals based upon service area. In this example, we have aquatics up there, and we might say, well, our aquatic services should be at 40%. But what we find is, we dive into any service area, we understand there are a variety of different kinds of services in that service area. The example on the screen is representative of two very common aquatic services that would exist in an aquatics area. On the left, again, we have a Learn to Swim program. On the right, we have a master swim team. If we were to determine a goal based upon service area, we understand there's a little bit of a rub here, because if we think about beneficiary of service, and we think about access, and we think about common good versus exclusive benefit, we begin to understand this becomes a little bit more challenging. Because we might say in our hypothetical, that a Learn to Swim program is going to appeal to a larger audience, it's got greater access, in contrast to a service that we might see as being a little bit more exclusive, where you have to have a mastery of skill in order to participate. I often use myself as an example. I'm not a swimmer, but I could take a Learn to Swim program, right? So we wanna think about the services that live within our areas and understand the importance of beneficiary of service. We are going to find, there are going to be a number of services in the same service areas that may be in different categories. This is to carry that example forward. We may see something like Learn to Swim, even though it's in aquatics, being a category like beginner level, and we may see Master Swim, again, that's in the same service area of Aquatics, but it's gonna likely be in a different category, something like competitive or advanced activities, okay? So the importance of beneficiary of service is critical. Your participation this evening, I cannot overstate the importance of the activity I'm gonna be asking you to do. The staff did this this afternoon, and the community group I'm meeting with a bit later is gonna do the very same activity. What we're doing is trying to hear from different persons who represent different perspectives, and different interests, and different opinions. So you're gonna help build what we refer to as the first iteration of the Financial Sustainability Strategy, this beneficiary of service model. You are going to be ranking, this is not a prioritization exercise, this is a ranking exercise, you're gonna be ranking the categories, from the category you believe aligns most with common good, to the category you believe to be most exclusive, and then everything in between. And again, I'm gonna get into the details and the nuance of the exercise here in a few moments. As we continue through the process, the final leg of the stool, and I say that in terms of not a linear approach, I'll say the other leg of the stool, is the cost of service. And this is what we have actually been working on since December. We've been working with your team, collecting revenues and expenditures, to best understand what it costs you to provide every service in the organization, whether it be a swim lesson, whether it be a day camp, whether it be a park shelter rental. And the idea is that we collect all revenues and all expenditures, including indirect costs. This is not just a direct cost exercise. Real quickly, I've kind of summarized this based on our last conversation together. You know, we are among the more challenging, complex parts of local government when you think about cost of service. We provide what some would deem as social services, we provide things that would be seen as enterprise operations, and everything in between. And what we're trying to do is account for all of those expenses. And you think about the different costs associated with a swim lesson versus a day camp versus a park shelter rental, they're all very different. So we've got many unique direct costs, and we've got a series of indirect costs. Anne is an indirect cost of the system. Ultimately, Jesse is an indirect cost of the system. And so we're right now focusing on the indirect costs of the Department of Parks and Recreation along with the direct costs, to best understand what it costs you to provide services, thus cost of service. So as a result of these three legs, and your contributions this evening, we'll be taking, obviously, the philosophical underpinnings of this, building a beneficiary of service model. And once the cost of service reveal is scheduled, which is coming up in the next couple of weeks, we're gonna be charging Anne and her team to establish goals based upon current performance. I like to say, you know, I have aspirations to run a marathon, but if I can't haul my hind end around the block, you know, I've gotta start somewhere, right? I've gotta think about what's a reasonable goal to set in place. And that's what we wanna do. We wanna use that cost of service, current cost recovery performance, to help us become the baseline and the benchmark from which we begin to set our goals. So we transform the beneficiary of service model into this idea of a financial sustainability strategy. I shared this one example with you last we met as well. I've got two up here for you. This is a park district in the Chicago metro area. It's still a park and rec system, albeit they have an elected board rather than a series of city council persons. You can see their categories, they were ranked with a community group, as well as staff, as well as their park board. The progression of the continuum was from common good to individual or exclusive benefit. And then, once they understood their cost of doing business, they determined what their goals should be. You'll notice in this one, the goals are based on subsidy investment. It means essentially the same thing. They felt like that resonated more with their community, so they could help their community understand how they were spending their taxpayer investment, right? Cost recovery, unfortunately, people think, oh, it's about generating fees and charges. Subsidy's more about how we're gonna invest and spend taxpayer resources. And you can also see, in the middle there, they chose to be very ambitious. They're subsidizing, they're putting all their subsidies into the four categories towards the bottom, and then the expectation is they'll have a zero subsidy all the way up to generating some excess revenues to reinvest in the system. Alternatively, this is Ashland Parks and Recreation, I believe I shared this one with you last time, I think it's important to share one from your area. This is a municipal system, it's a city system. You can see their series of categories ranked based on their board commission and staff contributions. Similarly, they actually have subsidy goals rather than cost recovery goals. We're seeing more of that. It's like a movement right now, getting away from cost recovery goal and actually calling it a subsidy goal. You can see, it's not a one-size-fits-all. We use the methodology and the framework consistently, but the outputs and the outcomes can vary depending on the organization. So, this is where we're headed. We're moving towards creating the Forest Grove Oregon Park and Recreation Department's Financial Sustainability Strategy. Tonight, you are helping contribute to the progression of the categories on the continuum, from common good services to exclusive benefit services. So with that, I'm gonna pause. That was a quick refresh of the methodology, but wanna see if you have any thoughts, comments, questions, before we actually get to the exercise tonight. All right. Hearing none, seeing none? Let's move on. I hope you have fun with this this evening. I hope you have some really robust deliberation and discussion, maybe even a little bit of debate. So this is what we call the beneficiary of service exercise, and we're gonna walk through these handouts together. I'm actually going to start with your service categories. So if you'd be kind enough to pull your category sheet out, and while I know that you all are capable of reading this, I find value in us going through it together. If you have any questions as a result, about any of the definitions or anything like that, we've got the professional staff in the room who might be able to address the questions, or I certainly may be able to address them as well. We have 11 categories that represent the service menu of the Park and Recreation Department. These are intended to represent all services provided by Parks and Recreation. I'm gonna read to you the category, the definition, and the examples, and then see if you have any questions, okay? They are in no other order right now than alphabetical, okay? I am gonna share one other little side note here. I have many, we'll say, community groups, or councils, or commissions, boards ask, you know, how did you arrive at this many categories, and so on. The categories can vary. I will tell you, the fewest categories I have ever seen, that we've ever worked with, was on behalf of the City of Austin Park and Rec Department, and they have 15,000, 16,000 different classes, courses, activities, events, rentals. They had nine categories. Simply about what categories make the most sense for our system, and making sure the categories represent all of the services provided. The most I've ever seen was 15. You're kind of in the middle. You've got 11, okay? All right, so let's start at the top, page one. You have beginner-level, skill-based activities. These are classes, clinics, workshops, leagues, and other led and/or instructed activities, where the primary goal is to introduce participants to a new activity so they may build new skills. Examples are junior lifeguard class, volleyball camp, yoga, youth pickleball, beginning swim lessons. Again, these are just some examples. Next are your community events. Community events appeal to the broader community, regardless of age, regardless of ability, skill, family composition, et cetera, and tend to be held on an annual basis. Examples include Oregon Birdman, Border Collie International, Movies in the Park, and Red, White, and Blue Dye Event. Next are your drop-in activities. These are self-directed activities which may or may not require registration and/or a membership. Drop-in activities include supervision by staff and/or volunteers, and may or may not require instruction. Examples of drop-in activities include lap swim, public open swim, water aerobics, and shower use. Your fourth category is education and enrichment. These are classes, clinics, workshops, and other led and/or supervised activities in which the primary intention is to provide socialization, interaction, and life skills development, with a focus on education and/or lifelong learning. Examples here include Lego camp, Home Alone Safety, No School Day, Camp Grove, babysitter training, craft and swim, and CPR first-aid classes. Next are equity services. These are services which focus on addressing community inequities, providing improved access to leisure opportunities. Please note, the staff believe these will be new services, so this was included as a category. These currently do not exist, but the expectation is they will exist sometime soon. Future service examples may include mobile recreation. So those of you that may not know what that is, that's an opportunity for the organization to take services into neighborhoods and communities, rather than expecting people to come to a location. It's an outreach effort. And the other one on here is adaptive recreation. That is recreation services for persons with disabilities. Next are food, beverage, and merchandise sales. That's the sale of merchandise and food and beverage items. That includes things like your vending items, concession items, and gift certificates. The last category on the first page are intermediate, advanced, skill-based activities. These are classes, clinics, workshops, leagues, and other led and/or instructed activities in which the primary intent is to master a skill, often in a competitive environment. Examples here are swim lessons levels four through six, stroke improvement endurance class, lifeguard certification, and lifeguard instruction. On the reverse, on page two, we have open access. Open access is access to parks and park amenities, where the user self-directs their own activity. Open access does not include supervision or oversight by staff under volunteers. Examples are your parks and your playgrounds. Next are personalized services. These are individualized classes, clinics, workshops, and other led and/or instructed activities, offered in a private or semi-private setting to meet the unique needs, interests, and/or skill sets of individuals or small groups. An example here are private swim lessons. Next are your, yes? Yeah, would you mind? We'll get through the next two, and then we'll open the floor. Next are your rentals. Equipment, space, amenities, and/or facility reservations for exclusive use by an individual or group inhibiting access by the general public. Examples here are spray park rentals, pool rentals, picnic shelter rentals, pool party room rentals, and athletic field rental. And finally, your special events category is the 11th category. These are events designed for a target market, market niche, or a specific interest. Examples here are Kids Night Out, Extravaganza, and Spray Park Chalk Event. Questions?
What do you think, Anne and Cody?
Excuse me, this is Counselor Ewing on Zoom. Could you please repeat the question as there's no ability? Thanks.
My question was, whether, under personalized services or equity services, say we were to offer CPR class in Spanish, which would that be considered?
Yeah, your CPR class is education and enrichment, but we'll see what Anne says.
So just so everyone's aware, the list of examples are, those are programs that we currently offer. We tried to make kind of broad categories, so we have some room for expansion when we add programs. And as those programs develop, we would decide as a team what service category they best fit within, and that will be based on, you know, what are the intended outcomes of the program?
Good question. Thank you.
I also had a question about the equity services. Historically, Forest Grove is an inclusive community, and why I believe equity work's important. I think it's a lens that should be in each category. I feel like, how do we do the, I'm not, and I'm trying to like gauge my personal opinion from living with a disability, and knowing how important it is with a family that was not disabled and disabled, to be able to do things together. And I think, like Sherri brought up a good question, like when we're looking at swim lessons in Spanish, like, there's so many things, like, to every category, we need to, as a community, do the equity work. I, there's pause for me, as an educator, as a person with disability, to say this is a separate thing. We, historically, Forest Grove is leaps and bounds above any other community in inclusive accessibility, in terms of people with disabilities, I believe. I believe how I was raised in the Forest Grove School District is why I am now the mayor, with a disability, first female, first with a disability. So I'm looking at any other historically underrepresented group, and wondering, like, if I'm being othered. And I don't think that was the intention. I just wanna, I need to put that on the record. I'm like, and I'm gonna say a little asterisk, I don't know if it's personal or policy.
Good. And I will call out, as an add to that, that inclusion is laced throughout every category. This was specific to services that are designed to reach markets that aren't currently served. So I don't know if Anne and Cody wanna add to that. But inclusion, you wanted to make sure that somebody, a person with a disability, or a person who had some challenges relative to access, something like a scholarship would provide folks an opportunity to be able to participate in any one of these services. So I think the staff probably saw this slightly differently.
So I think Mayor's coming from a very good perspective. Equity, having it as its own category gives us the opportunity to subsidize inclusion services that get injected into every aspect here. So it's not like we're saying it's only adaptive programming is in the equity service, and that's being put on a continuum, and those are individual classes that are quote-unquote equity. It gives us the opportunity to inject that into every aspect of what we do, by providing inclusion services that integrate participants into the existing programs and not creating other new programs. So not just adaptive programming, which is important, but those with other abilities should have the opportunity to inject themselves into existing programs. They just may require additional support, whether it's emotional or physical. The equity service category is, in my perspective, designed to create that opportunity to make that a part of the continuum, so it is a broader spectrum that can be put into all of them. But I definitely get what you're saying, and I hope I'm articulating that correctly.
I guess, just from my perspective, I agree with Melinda. And in terms of the lens, I look at it as more of a university. And in terms of the lens, I look at it as more of a universal access as a thread through all the programming that goes on. And so when you think about recreation in the, in the City of Forest Grove, this would be a universal access for, for all the programs that we provide. So that would be my, I mean, in terms of the school district, we've been doing that for 35 years, and we try not to isolate and, and, and target certain programs, but we try to make sure that we're inclusive through our whole system.
Real quick, could the commissioners state their name before their first time speaking? Just so I can have it for the minutes.
I'll just add, one of the first, one of the first departments actually to build an equity services category was Oregon City, principally to call attention to the fact that they wanted to start making a more concentrated effort, I guess, intentional effort to address equity and inequities in the community. So the organization may choose after this evening to say, you know, we're not going to call it an equity services category. That's entirely up to you. Whether or not you want to have an equity services category lives with this organization. This was, again, I think, to Cody's point, an opportunity to call it out and make sure that we weren't missing a mark. And if at some point along the way, there's some perspective or perceptions that we don't need to actually have an equity services category, then it can go away. But I will let you know, it's not a neighbor per se, but in your region, Oregon City was the first one to say, we actually want to, we want to call this out. We want, we want people to pay attention to this. We want it to be top of mind. We feel like this should be part of our category list, so. Other thoughts, comments, questions? Before we get started? All right. Okay, so here's what I'd like you to do tonight. We're going to do a beneficiary of service exercise. So if you would actually look at your second handout, I'm going to walk you through the exercise. Make sure that everyone's working from the same place. See if you have any questions about the ask, and then I'm going to put you to work. And I'm going to actually ask you to work in small groups tonight. So if you look on the, the front page of the beneficiary of service exercise, it's actually the page that has the green box. I'm just going to paraphrase these first two paragraphs. A financial resource allocation philosophy, so think about it as our financial sustainability strategy, right? How we're going to use taxpayer resources, how we're going to look at revenue generating opportunities, provides a foundation for differentiating services based on who benefits and who should pay. We do not own this intellectual property, frankly, nobody does. This is the way economists and the US economy have differentiated goods and services for decades. And it's a great foundation from which we think about beneficiary of service and we think about this idea of common good versus individualized or exclusive services. Determining the beneficiary of service becomes a primary driver in how a public park and recreation organization like Forest Grove Parks and Recreation can begin to make informed and defensible taxpayer investment decisions. Following this approach, each of the department's service categories have a set of specific characteristics. That's the definition and the examples that help provide a rationale for who should pay, whether it's the taxpayer, the individual, or both, and to what degree. Ultimately, it helps the organization align its investments with beneficiary of service. Okay? So I want to point your attention or direct your attention to the two definitions in the belly of this page in that green box. You have common good services and you have exclusive services. Let's look at what we mean by common good services. Common good services contribute to the common or greater good and can be characterized as essential, essential or must-have services, having community-wide impact. These services intend to influence social issues and needs. Common good services contribute to greater equity, ultimately making everyone in Forest Grove's life better. Alternatively, exclusive services serve specialized interests, benefiting the individual more than the common or greater good. These services can be characterized as discretionary or nice-to-haves with less community-wide impact and can include constraints or barriers to access. Typically, similar or like services are provided by others, meaning the nonprofit world, non-governmental sector, private sector, commercial sector, so on. Please note, typically, similar or like services are provided, okay? Your, my ask of you tonight is to rank the 11 categories that we just walked through together from the category that you believe aligns most with the definition of common good services to the category that you believe to be most exclusive. I'm going to share with you a recommended approach that can be helpful, and I'm going to share with you a please do not. The first is the recommended approach. The recommended approach is this, it's a bookend approach. Meaning, you may want to start with the category you believe aligns most with common good, being the number one, and then go to the one you think is most exclusive, and you work your way into the middle. The middle gets a little interesting, right? As we bring our philosophical perspectives to the table. So that's the bookend approach. If you're a linear thinker and doer, you'll probably go one to 11 or 11 to one, whatever works for you. On the back, you will notice some additional definitions. This is a subjective exercise that is intended to try to be as objective as possible. So therefore, you're given common good services definition and you're given exclusive services definition. You're also given additional definitions to create clarity about what is access? What are barriers or constraints? What do you mean by need versus want or discretionary versus essential? These are simply intended to help you in the exercise. At the end of the day, this strategy is yours. It's not mine, it's yours. So this is intended to help this organization be alive and thriving 20, 30 years from now. It's the intent of a strategy. So this is my ask. The final thing is, please do not, please do not allow any conversation as part of the exercise tonight to include money. This is not an ask about where you think money should go or what you think should be this much money or what you're currently charging. That has no bearing on this whatsoever. This is a beneficiary of service exercise. We are going to get there through this process. Once we understand cost of doing business and goal-setting starts, we will get there with the money, but tonight is simply about, do your services align with common good? Or do they align with exclusive and everything in between? Okay? So quick head count. Ian's not participating, so we have six, nine, we have 12 of you. I'm going to put you in.
And could you also tell me how we're going to include the Zoom participants?
You're going to, well, I, I believe someone here has a plan for you.
Counselor Ewing, Counselor Guston, and Erin, we're going to put you in a breakout room, and you'll be a group, so you can chit-chat with each other.
Okay.
Teacher's trick, thanks.
Well, I need, excuse me.
Yes.
You know, I'm too phobic. Well, I need to have another access number to get into the breakout group. How does that work?
Mariah's working on it.
Thank you, Mariah. I'll wait for further instructions.
All right, so the, the folks here are going to actually have an opportunity to work in groups of four. You'll be working in groups of three. Okay, do I have that right? No, I'm going to put, yeah, I'm going to put you in three groups of four. Yep, we'll do that. All right, so I'm going to count you off. This is going to be real academic. We're going to, we're, yeah. Actually, I think we'll do three. We'll do three groups of four here. So you're going to count off by three. I'm going to make this real tough, okay? So Mara, would you kindly? One. Two, three. All right, so let's have ones here, let's have twos here, let's have threes here, and let's have fours here, okay? Once you get settled, please direct your attention back to me just for a quick moment. I've got one more little instruction for you, and then you can be off to the races.
For Zoom attendees, I'm just going to go ahead and mute us and turn the volume on our end down, so you'll just be able to talk. And that way I can share the, the document on your screen as well.
Okay. Let me know when you guys are ready for input. Or not input.
All right, gang, can I get your attention just for a quick moment before you get started? So typically, with boards, councils, commissions, the sweet spot to complete this first ask is about 10 minutes. So I'm going to give you 10 minutes, but please don't rush. If you need a little bit more time, that's great. I'll just check in at 10 and say, hey, how we doing? Right, if you need a little bit more time.
This is a different page, so we need to see.
And the last ask, one person in each group would please volunteer to be scribe.
Yeah, we need to see the page that was previous to this, I think.
Every group would have a volunteer scribe, that would be great.
Mariah, can you hear us?
But here's, here's the thing. Please don't assume every woman in the group wants to be the scribe. Whoever's got really good penmanship is what I'm looking for. So, because I want to be able to read it. All right.
I think she's kind of muted us.
So I'd like you to deliberate and discuss. How would you rank?
Okay.
To 11, one being common good, 11 being most exclusive. Ideally, I would love it if you would come to consensus. I want you to imagine your three little communities all your own, and I'd like you to try to come up to consensus, okay? Deliberate, discuss.
Hey, I just talked to you.
Hi, Mariah. I don't know that you could hear us. Oh, you were. Okay, so what we need is not the one that's on the overhead. We need the exercise page. I think it's the one before.
So the one before is just, is the, the list.
Yeah, that's what we need, is the list to work from. Okay, thank you, Mariah. All right, thanks, bye-bye. She says we're good to discuss.
How do you all want to do this? Do we want to like start with the most good? And then figure out our most individualized and then fill in the middle?
I'm happy doing what the staffer or consultant suggested, and that's bookends, maybe starting from, you know, what we think is most to least, if that's okay? Are you guys good with that?
Yeah, that's what I was saying, but in different terms.
Oh, sorry about that, Erin.
You're okay.
So I'll just throw it out here. I think, you know, one of the most important things for us is to provide beginner level because that provides access, there's more inclusion in it. And I think it is, you know, a good foundation for any parks or rec program to provide those services to the community good.
I agree.
I agree. I don't think I would put that as my, how would I say? My inclusive that reaches the most people? I think to me that would go with community events.
I, I, I understand what you're saying. Erin, I just don't know for the community, that is a good community. Can we maybe keep that for a second tier in our conversation? Like, you know, entry-level services and then community events? Because I also have that ranked pretty highly as for the common good. What do we think out of this list is the least common good oriented?
Personalized services would be my item.
I, I agree, the individualized services, I think, are, and I would want to know too, do they provide those in other formats? Like, are there nonprofits that provide those activities? So that we're not the only ones having to shoulder that.
Yeah, and my least, in my, going to the opposite end of the spectrum, I'm actually going to change my answer and give, and give that back to open access. Because that's the, the one, the most accessible item we have. And we have an abundance of really nice parks. That there is, I mean, we have to have so many parks within such a walking distance of so many people. And I think the open access would be my, my opposite end of the spectrum.
Okay, okay. I, I can understand that. And I tend to agree with you that that's probably one of our top common good pieces that we provide. What do you think, Donna?
I, I'd agree with that as well.
Okay.
As far as, I, I didn't catch if we talked, I think, Erin, you mentioned at the other end of the spectrum, personalized services. I, I had a question about food, beverage, and merchandise sales. Is that like, if there was going to be like a vendor market at a park, that sort of thing? Because it talks about vending items, concession items, and gift certificates. So that kind of seems a little bit like just the vending items at the, like, the swimming pool. So I want to make sure I understand what they mean by that.
I think you're right. I think that that's what they mean by that, but we certainly can get clarification on that. I mean, but yeah, I tend to agree that that isn't mostly for the common good as well.
Right.
Yeah, that, that feels, I am with you guys there.
I'm so glad we're having this conversation because when I looked over the exercises and stuff, I thought I had a different take on it. So I'm really glad we're having this conversation. Going forward, I also kind of put the interim activities down towards the less common good because again, I felt that those were more individualized. And I think you can probably go to other sources to get some of that individualized help. Can I put that down towards the less common good section?
Yes, I think so.
Which was it again, Elena?
The interim activities, like master class.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, those are, you can, unopent times, those are stuff you can find elsewhere. Like, there's swimming pools everywhere. I think that's a good, good call.
And I would think the rentals also, I mean, that's for specific use. It's not, it's definitely not for the common good.
Okay.
Yeah. Excuse me, sorry. I think the only thing with rentals that gives me pause is the idea of all of like, how do I say? None of our youth sports are actually run by the Parks and Rec Department in Forest Grove. They're all run by other sources. So thinking in that, in that regard, it does hit a few more people, and we bring in teams from other towns. However, it does eliminate that amenity from everybody else's use. So I'm going to backtrack to a little bit.
Can I put that more in the kind of mid-category? Are you guys, because our, our not common good is getting kind of filled a little bit here.
I, I put it at seven, I don't know. We could kind of move them around a little.
You numbered yours, Donna.
I did.
I think seven's a good spot for that. I, I agree, I think.
I'll put a seven by that, and I've.
Okay.
Okay, that sounds good to me. Oh, and so, so bad at this. Okay, so we had talked a little bit about community events. Where do you guys see that one kind of falling?
I guess to me, that's like a two or a three if we're going to.
I put that at a two.
I agree. I agree, two, I think is a, is a good place for it. Uh, let's see, what about education and enrichment?
I kind of put that at a four, or a five or a six even. And I say that because of a lot of what they've listed on here. You know, those are, like, the Lego camp, I mean, I'm the one who brought the Lego camps to McMinnville, actually.
You did?
Yeah.
What a wonderful activity. I love Lego.
Anne stole those guys from me. She stole them from me.
They stole them from you.
I did all the rec programming in McMinnville for a while, like, seven years.
Oh, you did? Well.
I did.
Welcome, Erin, to this part of. Well, welcome, Erin, to this part of the world of Forest Grove. Thank you for your service on the committee. So I'm going to go ahead, if you guys don't mind. I've got that as a six because we were pretty... Had a consensus on seven being the rental.
Okay.
I think that's great.
Food services, should we rank that maybe as well? I see that more like maybe an 11. I don't see it as a big common good indicator.
I see, I thought 10 or 11.
Okay.
But I think 11 is good.
I put it as a 10, and I put personalized services as 11.
Okay.
I'm not sure where we're at now.
We're all over the place.
Okay, so I've, so far, this is what I have. And you guys kind of tell me if I... This right. So I've got open access as one for community good. Highest, going from one to 11 being the lowest common good. So I've got open access at one. I've got community events at two. Beginning classes, what do you guys think? I was thinking maybe a three or a four.
Okay.
Okay.
I think three or four is a good spot for that. That's where I was thinking.
I've got the individualized or personalized at 11. Food service at 10. The interim activities, I don't think we ranked. I've got education enrichment at six. So we've got interim that we still need to rank.
Is that the intermediate and advanced skills?
Yes, yes.
Yeah.
I put that at eight or a nine.
What did you say, Donna? I didn't catch you.
I put that at an eight.
Okay. So we've got kind of consensus. Erin kind of had it at an eight or a nine. Okay, what are we missing here? Drop-in services?
I feel like that could be the nine spot.
Okay. I don't have any disagreement with a...
This is really hard to not talk about the dollars and cents of the whole thing because, I mean, I know that's where we're going, but it's...
Yeah, yeah.
Drop-in services. Self-directed activities, registration. So that's just when people go there to swim, right?
Right, right. Swim, sauna, use the whirlpool, specific hours for them to be able to do that. But it still does take a bodyguard. It still does use some resources.
Got it. And what number did you put that at?
I put, we put that as, let me see, a nine.
Okay.
For community, common good. Okay, so, let's see. Drop-in, education and enrichment, I've got as a six. Food beverages, interim, we've gotten taken care of. Open access is the next one. This is user self-directs activity. I don't know what the difference is, I guess, in that and open access, but it is listed differently.
So I have open access as one. I thought that's what we had.
I believe all groups are finished. The Zoom group, are you all finished?
Oh, oh, I see it up there. I'm so sorry, guys. I'm so sorry.
Oh, that's okay.
Okay.
And where did we have special events?
Yeah, we don't have special events yet.
Oh, we don't?
Or the equity inclusion piece.
Right. Those are different.
Yeah, that one's a tricky one.
That's such, that's such a difficult... And I say that only because it's...
Zoom group, do you have a list complete?
We're hitting there. We've got maybe another minute to finish it out.
You need another moment? You need another minute? Okay, we'll have another minute or two. Okay.
All right, thank you. So we're back. I'm sorry, where were we?
We need to do special events and the equity.
Okay.
Inclusion.
Any thoughts on that? We've got community events pretty high. We don't have anything in the four category. And we don't have anything in the nine category.
Well, I would think that special events is...
Is maybe a four.
I would think that the special, well, it's a special event. That's, I mean, I don't know. It's for a target market or market niche, so...
Maybe like the chalk art? Or that they are using the water park area? What do you think that is, Erin?
Is it, is it inclusive? Or is it just for specialized groups that are invited?
I think it's, I mean, man, that's getting into the weeds. I think it is inclusive for anybody who's able, but it's also like, you know, that kids' night out? That's mainly just going to be parents trying to drop their kids off and get out of here. That extravaganza, I assume is for little guys to go hunt for eggs. Yeah. It is a target, yeah, how do I say? It's a target market, but you still are trying to reach as many people as possible. Does that make sense?
Okay.
It's a broad target. In my mind, it's a broad target.
Are we good?
We're debating, but I think we're probably where we're going to be for right now.
Close enough.
Okay, that's okay. That's okay. All right. So I'd like to do this. And we've got three folks, obviously, not in the room with us, who are working as a team. What I commonly like to do is give everyone an opportunity to kind of digest this and think about it a little bit, and then give you 24 hours to respond back to Anne. I think that's what I'm going to do tonight. Keeping in mind the conversations you had in groups, right, in teams, I would like you to do this. First of all, I'd love to hear from each team. Zoom, I know you're not done, so that's okay. But if you could each share your responses, one through 11, that would be great. So you can hear from one another. And then I'm going to ask you to take the next 24 hours and do your own. And get those to Anne by this time tomorrow. Please email them because it's going to be important to hear from all of you. Add those responses to what we hear from the community as well as the staff. I want to make sure that you're represented as much as anyone. So let's start with any one group here. And please, again, just share your responses, one through 11. We'll go around the room. Zoom folks, if you have yours prepared, it'd be great to hear from you as well. If you can't, I completely understand. And then again, if you'd like to digest, process, think about this a little bit more, sit on it, then you can return your individual worksheets to Anne by this time tomorrow. We'll say 6:00 PM tomorrow evening, okay? All right, so...
I think we're okay with going and kind of doing our results whenever you're ready.
Sure, please do. Please do.
So for common good, we had open access as one. We had community events as two. We had beginning level as three. We did not have a four spot at this time or a five spot. We have education and enrichment at six. We have rentals at seven. Interim activities as eight. Food services as 10. Drop-ins, excuse me, as nine. And we were kind of stuck and wanted a little bit more explanation on the special events and the equity.
Okay, great. Let me clarify special events for you. Special events, very simply, is in contrast to community events. Special events serve a market niche or a special interest. So you see things in there like the extravaganza, which is principally for families with children. Spray park chalk event, similarly. You think about being an older adult that's alone. That's not an event for you, as opposed to a community event that appeals to a large audience, a broad audience, regardless of interest, regardless of age, regardless of ability. So there's the delineation between those two. Equity, I shared this with the groups. It's just something to think about is to be cautious. You're not conflating inclusion with equity. Equity was the staff's intention of ensuring that they're reaching audiences and markets that have been, we'll say, traditionally underserved, underrepresented. Inclusion is really about making sure everyone in the community has access to all of the services provided by the organization. So they are two different things. That was, again, the staff's intention was to create equity services to reach audiences that just traditionally have not been reached by the organization. So hopefully, those two explanations help.
Thank you.
You bet. Okay, let's hear from, can I come to one of you folks to go through your list?
One, we have open access. Two, we have community events. Three, we have drop-in activities. Four is education and enrichment. Five is the beginner level skills-based activities. Six is equity services. Seven is intermediate, advanced, skill-based activities. Eight, special events. Nine, rentals. Ten, personalized services. And 11, food, beverage, and merchandise.
Thank you. Let's have this group go next, please.
Okay, and we have 11 spots. Kind of sounds like keynote, doesn't it? Number one is open access. Two is equity service. Three is drop-in. Four is community events. Five is education slash enrichment. Six, beginner level. Seven, special events. Eight, rentals. Nine, intermediate and advanced. 10, personalized services. And 11, merchandise.
Thank you. Anne, last but not least.
Okay, this was, yeah, interesting. So she clarified equity services. And we're, there was still a lot of disagreement in our group over that. And then Mariana and I thought, well, because that's what we are doing, not what the instructions say, that we said equity services at the beginning and then that flows through everything. So anyway, then we said open access, beginner level activities, four intermediate, advanced skills. Yeah, no, I know, but I wouldn't have put it there myself, anyway. Then drop-in activities, educational enrichment, community events, personalized services, rentals, food and beverage, and then special events last.
Okay, so work sessions being what they are, you all had a chance to hear from each group. What are your thoughts in response? And I would say your thoughts in response to, obviously, what you experienced in small groups, but also in response to what you heard from your colleagues in the council and the commission.
The discussion here, because we came from all different viewpoints, we still ended up with much agree. So I felt very comfortable, but we came up with in the fact that really had different backgrounds, where we were coming from, and yet came up with something concrete.
Yeah, I think what helped our group out, and I don't know if you want to use this, sorry, I'm just a teacher, I just think it's, but it's chunking it into three pots at first of the common good, the exclusive, and then in the middle. And so that was a way that we could agree. Because we started talking and I was like, oh, my gosh, like, we're getting off, like, we're debating on really details. And we're like, so just having a little bit more like, here's our pots. And then, once we had the pots, then we, then the debate, then the conversation could happen, right? And then that just seemed to streamline the process a lot.
Thank you. Others?
I think we were all very, we ranked very similarly. You know, maybe off by one or two. But I think, you know, all of us did get the idea the ranking, the importance of each one. Just that it felt you were demoting, you know, as you put them, they're all important. But if you put them six, seven, you know, it feels like, oh, but this is important too, you know? And couldn't be further than that.
Yeah, that's why it's important to understand we're not asking to prioritize. We're asking to rank based on common good and exclusive benefit. Common good and exclusive benefit. Yeah, it's tough to be in a position of influence and policymaking, right? I mean, it's not easy. But that's why we look at this idea and this concept of common good versus exclusive because arguably, those services are important to someone in the community, right? Anything from this group here? Thoughts, comments? Okay. Well, thank you very much for your contributions. This is what I'm going to ask you to do again. My mom always said repetition causes retention. So here it comes. Please take the next 24 hours, complete your worksheet. I'd like the group sheets, if you'd be kind enough, leave those behind. But I'd like you all to take your worksheet. If you need an extra one because you've doodled on the one you have, that's fine. We have more. Please, 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 put your name on the top. And then make sure 24 hours from now, it is in Anne Lane's hands. You can deliver it in person. You can send it to her by email, whatever works for you. Allow me to share with you what next steps look like. So how does this all work? How does this work all roll up? So here's where we're headed. And if you could just give me a couple more minutes of your attention, I'd appreciate it. So this is where we're headed. The staff did this exercise today. You are doing it, obviously, this evening. And we are meeting with a small group of community members who have graciously agreed to spend some time with us starting at 7:00 PM at the school district. We are going to take your responses as well as everyone else's. And we're going to rank the categories on this continuum. From the service category, you believe aligns most with the common good, to the category that you believe is most exclusive. We are then building out your financial sustainability strategy as a result. How that works, I'm going to just touch on next steps real quickly and then come back to any thoughts, comments, questions you'd like to share. The Community Representative Beneficiary Service Workshop starts at 7:00 PM. We're going to take their responses, staff's responses, and your responses. We're going to create four beneficiary of service models. We will have a staff model. We'll have a commission council model. We'll have a community model. And we're going to have a hybrid model. So we're going to take everybody's responses and synthesize them. We are going to then deliver those models to the project team and say, which model do you want to use moving forward? Keep in mind, there is no finish line to this work. This is not like a master plan that exists for 20 years. This is a place to begin. It's a baseline from which you work. You will have a working financial sustainability strategy as a result of your work tonight, as well as the cost of service results and the goals that are set for each category. And I'll go back to what that model looks like in a moment. We're about to schedule the cost of service reveal. We're in the final stages of the cost of service work. We schedule a one and a half hour meeting with the project team. We go through the data. We share goal-setting principles. So it is not an arbitrary exercise. There is other things we want you to be thinking about. Cost of service is one. Budget projections are another. We want to do our best to make sure we're not setting arbitrary goals. Those goals will be set for each of the categories. And ultimately, we will have a financial sustainability strategy draft for the organization's consideration. At the end of the day, it's yours, right? You're trying to, obviously, by way of this work, set the groundwork for ensuring that there is a strong fiscal baseline from which this organization continues to provide services. You're talking about growing an organization and you have a 36% cost recovery. So really be thinking about what that's going to mean practically for you moving forward. I will defer to some really prolific systems that really didn't do this work when they should have. And they are struggling right now. So I applaud you and I congratulate you. And it may sound a bit patronizing, and I don't want it to be. But organizations that are doing this early in the game are going to be much better off two decades, three decades from now than systems that just are all enamored with growth and development and they're not thinking about how they're going to pay for the system over the long haul. So this is where we're headed. We're going to help you create this park and recreation financial sustainability strategy. Your contributions, again, this evening are really important, but it's not static, right? It's not static. Hopefully, you continue to revisit it. You talk about it. You strategize what is going to make sense for the future of this organization as we move forward. So with that, Anne, any comments? Yes?
Thank you so much. I really always...
We've lost Melinda's voice. Sorry, we can't hear your conversation. Sorry, we can't hear your conversation.
They're switching batteries.
We're replacing the batteries in the microphone. Nobody's talking.
Just go to Jesse's mic or, right, there.
I feel like a talk show host, like. Okay, so one, oh, geez. One quick question I have is the city and the school district tend to share facility spaces. So this is all hearsay. But very recently, I had a community member ask me about the fee for lights. And there was a curious question of why the city charges a different fee than the school district. So I'm just wondering, like, when we're doing our cost analysis, like, is there capacity to make sure the fees are the same? Well, because the question is, if it's Forest Grove Light and Power, then it should be the same. So I'm just wondering, when you're doing this, if we're talking to the school district too? Because it's just, it's a gray area, and I did not know how to answer it.
Yeah, I am going to share my perspective, Anne. You can certainly jump in here. This organization is identifying its cost of doing business. And they're going to make their goal, they're going to set their goals and make their fees and charges decisions based on the cost recovery goals that are set and the cost of doing business. I can't speak to what baseline the schools are using, whether or not they've looked at cost of service. That's outside of the parameters of this work. We are focused on the Park and Rec Department with the city. That's something I think you'll have to deliberate. The caution would be, if you're establishing this strategy and you've accounted for your expenditures, then I would encourage you to make sure that your pricing aligns with the goals established here or you're essentially compromising the integrity of the process. But I have no idea what the school district's done or how they're setting their fees. And I don't know if that's something you can speak to or not. But that's outside of the parameter of this work. We're focused on the city. Would you add anything, Anne? Any other thoughts, comments, questions before we wrap up this evening? Well, again, we're heading to the school district to meet with the community. I want to thank you all for your time and attention. Anne, any final comments you want to share?
I too just want to thank everybody for coming and participating tonight. This is a really important process for us and laying the groundwork for our future. So thank you.